Good morning and welcome to this regularly scheduled meeting of the Minneapolis City Council. My name is Barbara Johnson, Minneapolis City Council President, and I'm joined by my colleague, Councilmember Lisa Goodman, Councilmember of the 7th Ward. We have, before our council meeting, a couple of resolutions to read, and the first is to honor one of our employees who has moved on to a new and exciting venture in his career, and we are going to sorely miss him. Tom Strites was our Housing Director and, you know, led us through some extremely challenging times, and I speak from my experience with the foreclosure epidemic that we had, and actually mortgage fraud to precede that, in the ward that I represent. And so Tom was instrumental in bringing us many, many millions of dollars in federal funds. Councilmember Goodman can talk about his work on the Twin Cities Community Land Bank, and just so many tools that he's left us with, and we want to wish him well and move him on, but we will miss him greatly. So, Tom, why don't you come up and join us?
Well, we want to wish you well and urge you to come back, not move you on. Sorry. So, we haven't filled your positions, so we were just thinking if that job training thing doesn't work out so well, then you could come back and do the work you love, because we love having you do this work. So, I just want to say a few things about Tom. I had the good fortune to know him, this will show you how old I am, during the Holman Consent Decree, when Tom worked for Legal Aid and worked with Chuck Lutz to try to create a situation where people who were living in that area were appropriately relocated and rehoused. We had the first opportunity to work together when you were at Legal Aid, when we saw the beginning of what we see now, which is outright eviction of people from homes that are rental in old buildings downtown. And we worked together originally on the Fairmont Hotel, which is now the Chambers Hotel, which was a SRO building with 45 units, and Tom and I went through the building and one by one relocated every one of those people. I think two in the end didn't end up being relocated. And the real victory in this was not that the Continental Hotel became the Chambers, but that people were housed better. In the end, some of them moved to public housing, some of them moved to privately-owned affordable housing, but every single person in the building got relocated. And I know one of the people, Jerry McKelvey, was very special to both you and I. So, we have worked together hand in hand for almost a decade now, and it's a real loss to the city. For the councilmembers who haven't had the opportunity to work with Tom, you really want someone in this position who walks the talk and is a true believer, and Tom is a true believer in the importance of housing as an entitlement, and that's what makes him such a special person in the city. And I know the housing people who are here today know that, because he believes in the work that they do, and was an amazing leader in this regard. So, he will be very sorely missed, and I'm sure Ms. Pulaski and Mr. Lutz would say, "Come back." We would be happy to have you. So, I'm going to go ahead and read the resolution and admit how poor my eyesight is. Honoring the Service to the City of Minneapolis by Tom Strites. Whereas Tom Strites has a deep passion for social justice, fair housing, and equity for all, and has often with great tenacity pursued issues and causes that help make the lives of many citizens in the great city of Minneapolis more affordable, safe, and better. And whereas Tom has served on many boards and commissions for the betterment of the community, including the Family Housing Fund, the Twin Cities Community Land Bank, the Minnesota Center for Book Arts, and whereas Tom served as the Deputy Executive Director of the Minneapolis Public Housing Authority from 2001 to 2008, and made many significant contributions to the successes of that body, including the dispersion of public housing units throughout the metro area. Whereas Tom serves since 2008 as the City's Director of Housing and Policy Development, and whereas under Tom's leadership, the Residential Finance Division stabilized, recapitalized, or completed 105 separate housing projects, including 6,218 units, with 4,330 of those units having rent restrictions to make them affordable to houses at or below 60 percent of the area median income. And of that total, 1,175 are available to very low-income households that make less than 30 percent of the area median income. And whereas many of the projects completed have significant development objectives, such as the Pillsbury A Mill, Longfellow Station, Riverside Plaza, others such as Touchstone, Claire Midtown, Emanuel Housing, and Riverview Apartments, serve special populations from individuals suffering with mental illnesses and HIV/AIDS, to veterans and senior citizens. Under Tom's leadership, the city of Minneapolis efficiently and effectively navigated the Great Recession of 2008 and managed $35 million of federal neighborhood stabilization program money, and developed a delivery system which became a model in efficiency and effectiveness in utilizing these funds. Whereas under Tom's leadership, the city response to the tornado, notable today, of course, of 2011 achieved phenomenal progress towards restoring our community. And whereas under Tom's leadership, the city created many innovative programs and policies to further the housing needs of the city. Those programs include Green Homes North, the Minneapolis Advantage Program, the Senior Housing Initiative, an intermediary land banking entity, the Twin Cities Community Land Banking, strategizing the use of HUD's Corridors of Opportunity Initiative. And whereas under Tom's leadership, partnerships were fostered or enhanced, including support of the Greater Metropolitan Housing Corporation's Bridge to Success Program, City of Lakes Community Land Trust's Hohmeyer Initiated Program, Metro Paint-a-thon, Hennepin County Taxpayer Services Memorandum of Understanding, where the city can acquire tax-forfeited properties for $1. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the City of Minneapolis, we recognize and express our sincere gratitude for the many accomplishments and contributions and tireless services of Tom Strites for his many, many years of public service to the city of Minneapolis. Be it further resolved, we wish Tom all the best in his great next adventure at Twin Cities Rise, and that we welcome him to come back at any time and do this job ever and any time in the future. Thank you, Tom.
Thank you. Thank you. Good morning, everyone. I am so honored to be here. I got to tell you, I came back to Minneapolis 20 years ago. I'm a native Minnesotan. I was born in South Minneapolis. I live about a mile from where I used to live, but took a long journey in my career and life, and went to the West Coast and got a law degree, then I went to the East Coast, and got another law degree, and worked in the United States Senate, and I came back to Minneapolis because I loved the city that I grew up in. And I've always had a special fondness for the city, and I always knew it was a great city. But one of the guiding philosophies that I brought back to me, with me into the city, was this vision that a great city is only as great as all of its parts. We can't have one part of the city that's shrinking while the rest grows, losing tax base, losing homeowners who are moving to the suburbs, because they don't feel like they're part of a greater good in the city. So, I dedicated my career really to that notion, Barb, as you know. And I firmly believe that North Minneapolis is on the rebound. It's going to grow. I think when we drive down Lowry in five years, drive down West Broadway, we can see the transformation beginning, and that is part of the story of Minneapolis, is that we are one city, and we're a great city when we work together. So, that really is my passion, and something I hope that I was able to express in my service to the city. I really honor the work of everyone here, all the councilmembers. You were great supporters. I'm still a citizen and taxpayer, so I plan to watch what's going on over here, just so you know, and be involved any way I can as a citizen and help you in your work. And I really believe we're poised for even more greatness in this city. I think we have a noble calling, and that together we're going to just advance the city in my new role, and I wish you all the best. Thank you so much.
Lesbian, Gay, Bisexual, and Transgender Pride Month in the city of Minneapolis. And I'm joined by Councilmember Quincy. And we have a resolution, we have a guest, and you'll introduce.
Thank you, President Johnson. I'm John Quincy, Minneapolis City Councilmember for the 11th Ward, and I'm joined today by Dot Bessler. If we could have her join us up here. She's with the Twin Cities Pride. And I am honored and privileged to author this year's Pride Month Resolution. It's building on the work of previous councils and mayors over the years, who've really championed the work in bringing together our community in such a magnificent, memorable, and fabulous way. Clearly, we are one Minneapolis with much more work to do. So, I'd like to read the resolution now, and then invite Dot to make a few remarks. And I also wanted to share a couple of comments from Senator Dibble and from Representative Karen Clark, who's joined us as well through the world of email. So, declaring June 14 Lesbian, Gay, Bisexual, and Transgender Pride Month in the city of Minneapolis. Whereas Minneapolis was the first city in the state of Minnesota to prohibit discrimination on the basis of sexual orientation and gender identity and expression, a position subsequently adopted by numerous Minnesota cities and the state itself. And whereas Minneapolis was the first city in the state of Minnesota to adopt an ordinance creating a domestic partner registry. And whereas the city of Minneapolis has been steadfast in its commitment to full legal equality for same-sex couples, and in particular to an end to the exclusion of same-sex couples from marriage, as well as public and vocal proponent of the Marriage Equality Statute passed in 2013 by the Minnesota State Legislature and signed by Governor Dayton. And whereas the Minneapolis City Council, in partnership with the Minneapolis Public School District, our legislative delegation, numerous advocacy organizations, has long advocated for the 2014 passage of the Safe and Supportive Minnesota Schools Act, providing a clear definition of bullying, listing 19 categories of students often singled out for bullying, and the creation of School Climate Center and Council to provide up-to-date anti-bullying research to school districts, and focuses on bully prevention. Whereas Minneapolis has a thriving LGBT community, sustaining and sustained by so many welcoming organizations, places of worship, businesses, neighborhoods, schools, events, and more. And whereas Minneapolis has benefited from the service and talents of numerous LGBT elected officials on the City Council, on the Park and Recreation Board, the Board of Estimate Taxation, and in both the Minnesota House and Senate, as well as countless appointed officials and city employees. And whereas Minneapolis annually plays host to the Twin Cities LGBT Pride Celebration, the city's largest outdoor festival, in which Loring Park is turned into a forum of celebrating LGBT pride and those, including allies, who work for it. Now, therefore, it be resolved by the City Council of the city of Minneapolis that June 2014 be declared Lesbian, Gay, Bisexual, and Transgender Pride Month in the city of Minneapolis, and that residents and visitors are encouraged to participate in the numerous activities celebrating Lesbian, Gay, Bisexual, and Transgender Pride Month in the city, and the ongoing work of leading Minnesota towards full LGBT equality. Signed today by Council President Johnson on behalf of the Minneapolis City Council, and approved by Mayor Hodges, and attested to by the City Clerk, Casey Carl. That's the news.
Thank you so much. You know, Twin Cities Pride is only one part of a larger organization, obviously, that works towards equality, full equality, for gay and lesbian, bisexual, transgender folks. We work with multiple levels of government to produce the events that we produce in Loring Park and our parade on Hennepin Avenue. We so appreciate the support of the Minneapolis City Council and welcome councilmembers to participate in our host city delegation in the Pride Parade. There's just so many government organizations, even in our state, that are not supporters of the LGBT community, and we really appreciate the support we get from Minneapolis. Thank you.
I do want to ask my colleagues' indulgence for a few more moments, because we have a terrific delegation that was united in this at the House and Senate, led, of course, by Senator Scott Dibble in the Senate, and Representative Jim Davney in the House, who authored the Safe Schools Bullying Protection Act, as well as Representative Karen Clark and Susan Allen, members of the LGBT community. I want to share a couple of messages. One is from Representative Clark, and I'm going to read this in her voice, and it'll become increasingly clear that it's her voice, not mine. Dear colleagues, I am sorry I cannot be with you this morning as I am out of town, but wanted to let you know that I am with you in spirit. I am always so proud of our city during this celebratory time. I was telling John this morning, that's me, about my memories of the first lesbian-gay march we had in the 1970s. Note that we did not have the awareness of the entire LGBTQ community in our early consciousness yet, and it took a few more years to develop that. Because we were not allowed to get a parade permit from the city at the time, we scheduled the march anyway and walked on the sidewalks down to Loring Park, drawing a police presence that did not interfere, however. I was part of the small ragtag group of lesbians, thus her voice, not mine, and created a marching band of about eight to 10 women, and we played the original song called "The Lesbian Rag" and handed out song sheets so observers could join in. If I were present, I would sing it for you, perhaps another time. I was a proud momentum of my own in Minneapolis history, and I am glad we had progressed and will continue to do so. As one of your state legislators, I am proud of the constituent or consistent, ongoing support of Minneapolis City Council as given to our state in the forms of numerous resolutions for support for important legislation, including those that helped us create the coalitions that passed the state's 1993 Anti-Discrimination Act, and the 2013 Marriage Equality Act, and the 2014 Anti-Bullying Safe Schools Act. You make me so proud, and I thank you for your ongoing leadership on behalf of all Minnesota LGBTQ and allies for your resolution today. Both of our state legislators, of course, are out of town, out of a well-deserved break from their important legislative session. Senator Dibble is in California with his husband, and I think he deserves that more than we do. So, thank you. Senator Dibble says, "Please accept this note as an expression of thanks and appreciation for the tremendous support of the LGBT community that is expressed in the resolution declaring June to be Lesbian, Gay, Bisexual, and Transgender Pride Month in the city of Minneapolis. Of course, it is your actions every day that are true consequence in creating a city where everyone can feel welcome, safe, and free. So, please also accept my thanks for all your hard work in building a city that works for everyone, and for delivering public services that support the goals and aspirations of each of our citizens, residents, workers, and visitors. Minneapolis has been widely recognized nationally and internationally as one of the best places for LGBT people to live, work, get an education, raise a family, and recreate. That has not come by accident. A place of peace and tolerance only happens through leadership, intentionality, risk, and hard work. I am deeply moved by the leadership of the city in bringing about passage of the freedom to marry and safe sport of schools for all. The profound legacy of these two advances, a future where youngsters growing up will just know that they are loved and they are part of a larger Minnesota family, cannot be overstated. The course of history, the unwinding of generations of heartbreak, is changed forever. Ours is a country where the work of extending and expanding opportunities to everyone rolls on. We have not reached the promised land. Too many personal and public tragedies are played out every day in our city, but we have a strong tradition on which to build, and your leadership today make it even stronger." So, on behalf of the City Council, I'd like to thank Representative Clark and Senator Dibble for their comments, and thank you, Dot, for all of your work, and we look forward to a great June.
Clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Kano is absent. Councilmember Reich.
Here.
Bender.
Here.
Glidden.
Here.
Yang.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Quincy.
Here.
Worsami.
Present.
Goodman.
Present.
Fry.
Here.
Palmasano.
Here.
Gordon.
Here.
President Johnson.
Here.
There are 12 members present.
We have a quorum present. Councilmember Kano is involved in family activities and can't join us this morning. So, our next item on the agenda is adoption, the agenda, excuse me, we have a motion by Councilmember Reich.
Thank you, Madam President. I move to amend the agenda to delete unfinished business, item three, relating to the introduction of subject matter of an ordinance amending Title 18, Chapter 478, Section 47890 regarding parking restrictions around school property. Further staff review has identified alternative paths to the ones suggested by the action.
Councilmember Reich has moved and has been seconded to delete unfinished business, item three. So, I'll go to my back here and take that out. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed? That carries. You'll see, there was originally a motion to amend the agenda for an item for the Assistant City Coordinator, Jeff Johnson, and that's been removed, so we don't need that motion. So, the agenda, any other motions to amend the agenda? Seeing none, all in approval of the agenda as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That carries. Next, we have acceptance of the minutes of the regular meeting of May 9, 2014. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed? That carries. Next, we have referrals of petitions and communications and reports of the city officers to proper committees and departments.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed? That carries. Now, we go to the regular committee agenda, and the first is the Community Development and Regulatory Services Agenda with that committee's chair, Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam President. The Community Development and Regulatory Services Committee brings forward 11 items for approval this morning. Notable items include item number eight, which is the prepaid debit card program we're putting into place for our step-up interns, so that they can deal with the unbanking issue. Item number 11 is also notable. This is the contract with Architectural Alliance and Sinkhome Delfts for the architect and design services for the Target Center. I will move items one through 11 for approval this morning.
Councilmember Goodman has moved the Community Development Regulatory Services Agenda. Anyone want to pull anything off on that agenda? And I don't have my thing on. Councilmember Glidden?
Thank you. I just had a short comment on item number two.
Okay, why don't you go ahead?
Thank you. So, I just wanted to make a little comment on the mobile food stores ordinance, because this is one where I have done absolutely zero work on this, other than noting it moved forward. I know there has been a lot of conversation back and forth with staff, but interestingly, this is one that has really captured the attention of a lot of residents in my ward, and I imagine others are hearing comments about this, too. Very interested to see how this ordinance is able to affect access to healthy food in our city, and just wanted to say congratulations to the author on moving it forward.
Any further discussion on any of the items on the Community Development and Regulatory Services Report? Seeing none, Clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Fry.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have Health, Environment, and Community Engagement with that committee's chair, Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you very much, Madam President. The Health, Environment, and Community Engagement Committee is bringing four items forward for approval today. The first is passage of an ordinance amendment to Title 10, Chapter 204, dealing with environmentally acceptable packaging. The second is authorizing internship agreements with Augsburg College and Bethel University to allow school-based clinic programs to be a clinical practicum training site for students enrolled in graduate programs. The third is to authorize execution of a contract with Tree Trust in the amount not to exceed $75,000 to finish up some of the landscaping and tree planting services in Minneapolis resulting from the tornadoes in North Minneapolis. And the fourth item is authorizing, oh no, this is the one about the tornado, sorry about that, authorizing increase to the contract with Wilson Custom Tree by $75,000 for conducting a tree remediation program to address the tornado-damaged trees. I will stand for questions, but I will also move all four items forward for approval at this time.
Councilmember Gordon has moved the Health, Environment, and Community Engagement Report in its entirety. Anyone want to pull anything off or any discussion on any of those items? Councilmember Andrew Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to speak to item number one, because it is something that has been highly visible in the media, and especially around this thought of banning polystyrene containers, in which we have heard a lot, a lot, a lot of support for that. And while I appreciate that, I also want to let folks know that this proposed ordinance change is doing several things. First off, polystyrene containers are already banned, and any time we go to modify an ordinance or change something, we open up the door, and we did have, for instance, some lobbyists fly in from out of state representing the chemical industry, some chemical manufacturers, and they were interested in actually getting us to walk back that existing ban on polystyrene containers. And so, they have gone to some effort to try to organize around that, as well, we've had people on the other side, lots and lots of people going out there trying to organize support for a polystyrene ban. Again, we're not banning polystyrene containers here. What this proposed ordinance does is really three things. The first off, we are reducing the penalty on businesses from a misdemeanor to an administrative fee, and we think that that is an appropriate action, reducing that penalty. The other thing we do is we're modernizing this by allowing compostable containers, which currently, under the existing ordinance, are not allowed within our restaurants. And I think a lot of people would agree that that's something that we should allow. We also are simplifying the language of the ordinance so that it is easier to read. We have worked extensively with the Restaurants Association and others to make sure that any kind of concerns around what is or isn't allowed have been addressed, including, I know there was some concern around paper cups specifically, and staff have worked with them to identify that there is no reasonable alternative, thanks to Councilmember Fry for his amendment around reasonable alternatives. And so, those particular products would be exempt under the ordinance as it stands. There's also some question around the actual implementation timeline, and there have been thoughts both ways. Some people that say, "Oh, we should actually implement this sooner than later, legalizing the composting and all of that." Others that say, "Oh, we should maybe delay it a little longer." Well, as a consolation or as a compromise, we have extended out that date from January 1st to April, I believe it's 22nd, I don't have it right in front of me, basically Earth Day. So, we have extended it out so that it would go out basically a year. So, we're very happy, working with so many others on this, to have this moved forward, and we're very excited about being able to make an ordinance even friendlier and even easier to understand, and also lowering the penalty for our business. And I also want to really thank our staff for all their work on this, identifying an opportunity here to update language. They've just gone above and beyond, working with the restaurant community, working with the interested parties in this, resolving any sort of concerns that might be out there. And I know they're here today, and I really want to thank them for their help with this, Josh, Dan, Kelly, others, yes, that's the problem when you start listing off names. have as well. So, thank you.
Councilmember Frye.
Thank you, President Johnson, and I also want to thank Councilmember Johnson for all of his work on this ordinance. This is absolutely, you know, it's walking the walk with respect to environmental sustainability in our city and moving towards a zero-waste municipality. The amendment that I proposed during the committee session, which I will just comment on in brief, what it did was it added the word reasonable to Section 5204.50 Rules and Regulations. My one concern, as I do have a lot of bars and restaurants in my ward, is that you'd have the situation where there was a commercial alternative, but that commercial alternative was not reasonable. I foresaw the circumstance where there was a particular kind of beer, maybe, and this is kind of a joke, but, you know, I'm half-serious, where this beer was not able to be held in any container but this one specific container. And while there was a commercial alternative over in, say, Thailand somewhere, that commercial alternative costs like 1,000 times that of the cup that they were presently using. Obviously, that would be a commercial alternative, but it's not reasonable. So, what we did was we changed up. So, it says, "The Environmental Health Division may upon notice and hearing promulgate such rules and regulations as may be necessary to carry out the purposes of this chapter and protect the health of the public, including the development of exemptions under Section 204.70 for packaging for which there is no reasonable commercially available alternative." So, that should alleviate some of the concerns of the restaurant and bar industry. And I have the understanding that staff will be working in collaboration, in constant collaboration with the restaurant and bar industry during the promulgation of this ordinance. So, thank you. I'll be voting yes and look forward to working with everybody.
Any further discussion on the Health, Environment, and Community Engagement Committee Report? Seeing none, clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmisano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Intergovernmental Relations Report with that committee's chair, Councilmember Glidden.
Thank you, Madam President. We just have one item, and it's to extend a contract with Fegory BD Consulting, which performs federal lobbying services for us, and I will move approval of that item.
Councilmember Glidden has moved the Intergovernmental Relations Report. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmisano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have Public Safety, Civil Rights, and Emergency Management with that committee's chair, Councilmember Yang.
Thank you, Madam President. We have three items today. The first item is authorize staff to sign the master cooperative agreements, ancillary agreements, and procurement agreement for the next generation 911 call handling system. Second is to accept a grant award in the amount of $1,250 for the fire department to use to purchase Cardiac Science Power Heart AED G3 batteries. And the third item is to authorize acceptance of 60 smoke alarms from the Minnesota Safety Council to the fire department for distribution to families in need in North Minneapolis. And with that, I will move for approval of all items.
Councilmember Yang has moved the Public Safety, Civil Rights, and Emergency Management Report. Any discussion on any of those items? Seeing none, clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmisano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Taxes Report, and that committee is chaired by, remind me, I'm so sorry. Pardon me, Councilmember Worsami.
Worsami.
All right, thank you, sorry.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have one item on the agenda, which is the approval of the 2014 Board of Appeal and Equalization Special Board of Review Report, and I move to approve the report.
Councilmember Worsami has moved the Taxes Report. Any discussion on that item? Seeing none, clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmisano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Transportation and Public Works Report, and that committee is chaired by Councilmember Reich.
Thank you, Madam President. The committee forwards 14 items today. Item one is the 2014 Alley Resurfacing Program. Item two is the 40th Street East West Street Resurfacing Project Amendment, and that's a resolution amending 20, or 2014 R. 189, which was passed in April 25, 2014, and to amend the project location and amend the associated committee report to revise the cost estimate of the project, and reschedule the public hearing for June 3 to June 17, 2014. Item three is to approve the application for the Adina Art Fair. Item four is to approve the application for the Rock the Garden Event. Item five is the Fridley Filtration Plant Ammonia System Replacement, and that is to authorize an increase in the contract to Municipal Builders Incorporated by $400,000 to allow change order number one and to extend the completion date of the contract to December 31, 2014. No additional appropriations required. Item six is the quitclaim deed replacement, passage of resolution authorizing execution of that action to the current owners of the property located at 3305 East Calvin Parkway. Item seven is the Inter-City Regional Trail Cooperative Agreement with Three Rivers Park District and the Minneapolis Park and Recreation Board relating to the Inter-City Regional Trail. Item eight is the 54th and Lindale Special Service District Advisory Board, and that is approve the following appointments to that board of Daniel Campo, Karen Cassett, Tim Hokason, Vicki Johnson, John Majewski to that board. Item nine is the National Public Works Week, passage of resolution declaring the week of May 19, 2014 is National Public Works Week, and of course, this is a recognition of all the great work that people under that department do in service of this city. Item 10 is the Blue Line LRT Extension, AKA Botno Corner DIS comments, approve the proposed comments of the draft impact statement to the Blue Line extension and direct submittal of those comments to Hennepin County. Following items refer to the Ways and Means Committee. Item 11 is the Fourth Avenue Street Resurfacing Project. Item 12 is the Hay Northeast Franklin Hall Lynn Lake Park Area Street Resurfacing Projects. Item 13 is the LaSalle Avenue Street Resurfacing Project, and that goes from Grant Street West to 12th Street South. And then, the LaSalle Avenue Street Reconstruction Project, which goes from 12th Street South to 8th Street South, and the related actions for those projects. And the last bit of business from the committee is item 14, accept low bid of train company for automation, building upgrades, and accept single bid of Thomas &amp; Sons Construction to complete the Riverside Extension at 15th Avenue South and 4th Street South Reconstruction Project. Madam President, I move all items.
Councilmember Reich has moved the Interior Transportation Public Works Report, very extensive agenda today. Any discussion on any of those items? Seeing none, clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmisano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Ways and Means Report with that committee's chair, Councilmember Quincy.
Thank you, President Johnson. The Ways and Means Committee is bringing forward 12 items today for your approval. The first is a legal settlement with Carmen Snyder and Jim Peterson versus the City of Minneapolis. Second item is authorizing the city coordinator to enter into an agreement with Alliance on Race and Equity. The third item is the passage of resolution accepting gifts for the City of Minneapolis valued under $15,000. It's the 2014 first-quarter gift acceptance. The fourth item is the Payment Card Industry Information Security Policy, approving and implementing the PCI policy. A fifth item is authorizing the issuance of request for proposal for fully insured and self-insured plan funding for coverage effective January 1, 2015. The sixth item is the authorizing of an increase to a contract with Unisys Managed Services for an increase in the scope to provide for computer-aided dispatch 911 server storage refresh. Seventh item is authorizing and extending IT-active master contracts through September 30 of this year. Next item is authorizing and establishing consulting pool through the city's request for proposals process for services related to IT staff augmentation consulting pool for a period of three years. The next item is the extending a contract with LinkedIn Corporation for two additional years through May 31, 2016, to continue aiding the IT department in candidate recruitment and using LinkedIn's contract agreement. Tenth item is the Gopher State One Call, extending a contract with Cortera Inc. through March 31, 2017. The next item is extending a contract with A+ Systems through August 31, 2015, to provide power and connectivity to cameras around the 3rd and 4th police precincts and increase that contract by $100,000. And the final item is the passage of resolutions approving collective bargaining agreements and authorizing execution of documents with the Electricians Unit, Minneapolis Building, Construction and Trades Council, AFL-CIO, for two-year terms. Happy to move all items on the Ways and Means Agenda.
Councilmember Quincy has moved the Ways and Means Report. Any discussion on any of those items? Seeing none, clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmisano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Zoning and Planning Report with that committee's chair, Councilmember Bender.
Thank you, Madam President. We have four items on the zoning and planning agenda. Item number one is to, the committee moved to deny an appeal filed by Diane Hofstadt from the decision of the City Planning Commission approving applications on behalf of Steve Kraus for a conditional use permit in site plan review to allow a new 7,500-square-foot building housing a liquor store, subject to conditions. Those conditions have substantially changed the plan, so I will be moving to remand that back to committee. Item number two is passage of a resolution approving application to vacate part of utility easement to allow ground-level mechanical equipment additions. Item number three has three parts on behalf of LifeSource. The first part is passage of a resolution to vacate multiple drainage and utility easements subject to a new easement for city utilities being provided. The second part is to authorize execution of a final utility easement relocation and construction agreement, and the third part is to authorize execution and recording of the declaration of drainage and utility easements. And the fourth item is to approve application to rezone a property from R3 to C1 to allow a catering business, occasional restaurant, 955 square-foot addition and modification to the 2013 City Planning Commission Condition of Approval, which is removal of a curb cut, and passage of this ordinance amending the zoning code to allow Chow Girls catering business there. So, I will remove, to remand, item number one and to approve items two through four.
Councilmember Bender has moved the Zoning and Planning Report with item one back to committee. Any discussion on any of the other items? Seeing none, clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmisano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have resolutions, and the first is an honorary resolution, which was read before the council meeting, honoring the service of the city, to the City of Minneapolis by Thomas Streits. Any discussion on the resolution? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, that carries. Next, we have the next honorary resolution, which was read before the council meeting, declaring June 2014 Lesbian, Gay, Bisexual, and Transgender Pride Month in the City of Minneapolis. Any discussion on that resolution? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Next, we have unfinished business, and the first is an ordinance introduction by Councilmember Andrew Johnson to introduce the subject matter of an ordinance amending the code relating to food code, bread, for first reading and referral to Health, Environment, and Community Engagement Committee, repealing Chapter 92. Any discussion on that introduction? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, that carries. Next, we have the ordinance introduction pursuant to notice by Councilmember Andrew Johnson to introduce the subject matter of an ordinance amending the code relating to the food code, water for drinking and domestic purposes for first reading and referral to the Health, Environment, and Community Engagement Committee, repealing Chapter 196. Any discussion on that ordinance introduction? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Next, we have new business, and the first is an ordinance introduction, unanimous consent is required. It's a motion by Councilmember Gordon to introduce the subject matter of an ordinance amending the code relating to licenses and business regulations, open-air motor vehicle parking lots, amending the number of days in a calendar year for temporary parking lots. Any discussion on that motion? Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you. I just thought, because I'm requesting unanimous consent, I could mention this is intended to assist with businesses around the football stadium at the University of Minnesota. We're already expanding some activities there in order to accommodate the Vikings that are going to be playing more games there. And one of the ways we've been helping those businesses is also to give them the possibility of using parking for game days, but with the Vikings and the Gophers playing, we need to increase the number of those by getting this on the table today. We can have the public hearing in sync with the public hearing we're having on the expansion of premises for the bars and clubs in the area that go along with that.
Any discussion on the ordinance introduction? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, that carries. Next, we have a motion by Councilmember Glidden to authorize the proper city officers to execute a cooperative service agreement with the Minneapolis Public Housing Authority allowing MPHA to secure benefit consulting services with the city's benefit consulting firm, Omen &amp; Martin Company, for an estimated not-to-exceed amount of $75,000. Any discussion on that? New business? Councilmember Glidden?
Thank you, Madam President. I just thought I would make a brief comment since this is a little bit more substantive item than sometimes is on our new business. This relates to actions we have already taken by this council to start moving along the road to explore self-insurance and our promises to MPHA to assist them as part of this process. So, that is what this is part of doing. Our city attorney, Susan Trammell, is here if people do have questions, but she is not going to make a presentation unless desired.
Any discussion then on item two? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, that carries. Next, we have a notice of intent, and it's a notice of intent given by councilmembers Palmasano, Glidden, and Frye to give notice of intent to introduce at the next regular meeting of the city council the subject matter of an ordinance amending the code relating to liquor and beer and amending provisions by and in response to potential charter amendment regarding food to alcohol sales for certain restaurants. Do people want to speak on that? No? Oh, Councilmember Glidden, I'm sorry, I thought that was from the last one.
I apologize. Thank you very much, and I, again, I'll just make a brief comment, but just want to say thank you to my partners and colleagues, Councilmember Palmasano and Councilmember Frye. There has been a conversation that has started in our city. It relates to a couple different types of restaurants, ones that have a requirement to sell 60% food and 40% alcohol, and then a second tier, which is they're called the 70/30 restaurants. They're required to sell 70% food and 30% alcohol. The 70/30 restaurants right now are organizing, they are talking about an amendment that may go on the ballot relating to the fact that they are in the city charter with this requirement to sell 70% food and 30% alcohol with some other related requirements. Part of the questions in the neighborhoods, very reasonable questions, and for the restaurant industry, is that if we change these food alcohol requirements, what would then be our mechanisms to make sure that our restaurants are good neighbors, that we have good ways to monitor and manage them from a staff perspective? And so, introducing these ordinances is the start of that conversation. It's our way to engage with the public as well as with the restaurant industry on how we can have reasonable and good standards. Personally, I will say that I think these food alcohol mechanisms are outdated and maybe not the best mechanisms, but it begs the question, if we don't have that mechanism, what is the one that is right? So, thank you to my colleagues.
So, that notice is given. And next, we have notice of intent by Councilmember Andrew Johnson to give notice of intent to introduce at the next meeting of the city council the subject matter of an ordinance amending the code relating to the food code, eggs, repealing Chapter 194. That notice is given. With that, we've dispensed with our agenda, and so announcements are in order. If anyone has any announcements, Councilmember Yang.
Thank you, Madam President. Yesterday marked the third anniversary of the tornado that happened in North Minneapolis, and, you know, as I reflect on that, I wanted to say a few things. One is that, you know, I commend the city for working really hard to get rid of some of those things that have been there for such a long time, and I specifically think of two houses on Oliver that have had tarps for about the past three years, and thank goodness, they're gone. And, you know, if we can move with all deliberate speed to get some of those other places that do have tarps and have other things to be gone, that would be great. You know, those sorts of reminders are not good for our part of the city. So, you know, I'm just amazed at the folks in North Minneapolis who are so resilient, who have worked really hard to recover and to make good lives out of, you know, that bad situation. And, you know, I just wanted to recognize, or at least, you know, have all of us think about those folks that, you know, have worked so hard to get back to normal, if there is such a thing now.
Councilmember Quincy.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to remind people, not that you need reminding, that as May closes, I was just impressed to see all the high school kids out there celebrating prom, having a reasonably good time, still within the ideas of safety. And of course, we've had dozens of our high schools celebrate graduations, so I just[1719.83]